Begin our April 20th meeting of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, and we'll open with our invocation. Please bow. Dear Father, please guide and lead us in our discussions tonight. We have so many blessings to be thankful for. Please keep all of our emergency service personnel and our military, home and abroad, safe. Lead us through the coming days, in thy name we pray. Amen.
Congratulations to the White, United States of America, with its representative of which it stands, one nation, God and our God, and his visible, legitimate justice in all this world.
Tonight, we'll start off with our employee recognition, service rewards, and retiree recognition. With five years of service, Jonathan Davis with the Sheriff's Department, Ann Edwards with Human Services. With ten years of service, Karen Crowder, Human Services, Peggy Redfern with Human Services, Sherri Gumbel with Human Services. And with fifteen years of service, Laura McManus with Public Works, Dana Pastorez with Human Services, Philip Avery with Tax Administration, Jody Fowler-Lemon with Tax Administration. And with twenty-five years, Lilla Mills with the Tax Administration. Please thank these employees for their service. And retirees for the month of March 2015, Sherri Traywick with Human Services with fourteen years of service, Sharon Boyett, Human Services with ten years of service, and Tony Russian with the Sheriff's Office with sixteen years. Next, we'll begin with the introduction of Michelle Lancaster, Assistant County Manager. Ms. Manager?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very pleased to announce, Michelle, do you mind going to the, sorry, to the lectern? Michelle has been with us since her fifth day. She began on the fourteenth of April, and she's a native North Carolinian. She's actually from Rutherfordton, okay, and that's, therefore, her name is Lancaster, not Lancaster. Michelle comes to us from Mecklenburg County. She worked with them for about a total of fifteen years. Six years, she was in the role of Assistant County Manager and had oversight of about 2,300 employees and a budget of 269 million. And prior to that, she worked at Mecklenburg in numerous positions within the manager's office as well as the board's office. She has her Masters in Public Administration and a Bachelor's in English, both from the University of North Carolina in Charlotte. And we're very pleased that she is with us because she brings us many skillsets that we think will be very helpful as we start our strategic initiatives, especially in some of our collaborative efforts and working with our municipalities. And as already, her five days here met with, I think, most of the department directors and is getting to know Union County and has kind of hit the ground running, so we are very pleased to have her.
Welcome.
Thank you, very glad to be here. Been a very welcoming organization so far, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. Next, we'll have our first public hearing on Project Lone Star for a Step Four Modified Economic Development Incentive Grant. And Ms. Manager, if you'd like to...
Mr. Platte, if you'd like to come forward and give us a little bit of background before we take public comment, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Helms, Commissioners, Manager Cotto. It's my pleasure to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive request by Project Lone Star for a Step Four Modified Incentive Grant. Due to the confidentiality of the company, in the nature of the project, we are unable to disclose the company's name at this point, but look forward to doing that shortly. In the mid-seventies, Lone Star pioneered a field of automated composition and database publishing using state-of-the-art computer technology. Since that time, the company has grown into a national provider of data-driven publishing and marketing communication services for major U.S. organizations. Lone Star has operations based in California, headquarters operations in California, and additional operations in Texas. The company is considering the acquisition of the former Turbomeca facility in the Monroe Corporate Center and creating an East Coast presence in Union County. If our community is selected of the communities that they're looking at, their project would include building improvements, new machinery and equipment in this location. The city of Monroe has been shortlisted and is one of several locations within the Carolinas. The decision is expected later this month, the final decision. If Union County is selected, the anticipated taxable investment in building and equipment would be approximately $140 million over the next ten years. The investment is required a minimum of ten jobs, being that they're a new company, but the project has the potential of creating 250 jobs, paying an average of just exceeding $60,000 per year. The company began conversations with our office back in the late 2014 and has indicated that incentives are a critical factor in the corporation's final location decision. The Monroe Economic Development Board of Advisors has discussed this project at their regular meeting on March 10th, and we bring this incentive to you tonight with their full support. The incentive is a modification from our current guidelines due to the fact that the equipment is digital and will have a very fast depreciation rate. Basically, the equipment will depreciate to 5% in five years. We are recommending that we modify the Step Four grant so that it becomes an amount not to exceed $1.96 million based on their investment of $140 million over a ten-year period. That grant would also be over the ten years, not over the five years like our traditional grants. Based on the projected investment in Union County, the current tax rate and assuming a consistent assessed value with depreciation, the company could pay an estimated ad valorem tax of $2.63 million in new taxable investment, in new taxable, on their investment over the grant period. The actual tax revenue, of course, to the county will be calculated using the assessed value of their investment each year, depending upon the depreciation schedule and timing of the company's investments. The city of Monroe is also considering a similar grant for the company tomorrow night at their regular meeting. This project also achieves a cost-benefit analysis of 3.31 over the first ten years of the project or the grant period. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors and staff recommend the award of this performance-based Step Four Modified Economic Development Incentive Grant to Project Lone Star not to exceed $1,960,000 over a ten-year period beginning in fiscal year 2017. Tonight, we welcome, we can't use their full names, but Jim and Skip. Jim is President of the company and Skip is a special consultant. These men are here to answer any questions you have about the company, except for the name, as well as about this specific project. Any questions?
We'd like to welcome them to Union County and look forward to working with you long-term.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Next, additional public hearing on Project Pipe for a Step Four Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,490,000 over five years. No, we didn't...
Okay, sorry.
No, we didn't have anybody to speak at this, and I was getting ahead of myself. Sorry, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that you close that public hearing then if there's no one to speak to it.
Thank you, sir. So, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Lone Star. All approve? Okay. Thank you for keeping me straight, Jeff. Next public hearing, okay. Project Pipe for a Step Four Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,490,000 over five years. Ms. Manager?
Mr. Platte, you're on.
Again, Commissioner Helms, Commissioners, Manager Cotto, again, it's my pleasure to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive request by ATI Specialty Materials, otherwise known as Project Pipe, for a Step Four Incentive Grant. ATI Specialty Materials, formerly Alvac, was founded here in 1957 in Union County with the purposes of producing specialty metals and a specialized vacuum process. Since that time, ATI has grown into an international leader in metals and aerospace super alloys. ATI has operations throughout the United States and abroad. Their customers include airframers and engine builders such as Boeing and Airbus, Rolls-Royce, and General Electric. It is safe to say that every plane flying in the world today has some ATI metal on it. ATI is considering the acquisition of the remaining 57 acres that comprise the Arrowpoint Industrial Center in Monroe. If our community is selected, their project would include a new building and machinery and equipment at this location. The city of Monroe has been shortlisted and is one of several locations in the U.S. The project decision is expected later in 2015. If Union County is selected, the anticipated taxable investment in building and equipment would be approximately $63.5 to $70 million over the next five years. The incentive does not require a job creation since they're in existing industry, but the project has the potential of creating 70 jobs, again, like Lone Star, exceeding $60,000 in their average wage. The company began conversations with our office earlier this year and has indicated that incentives are an important factor in the corporation's final location decision. Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors has discussed this project at their March 10th regular meeting and bring this incentive, we bring this incentive to you with their full support, again. The incentive is a traditional grant, so we're recommending that it be a Step Four grant not to exceed $1,490,000 based on their $63.5 million investment, which is the minimum of their investment, over a five-year grant period. The project is projected, is projected investment in Union County. The current tax rate and assuming a consistent value with no depreciation, the company could pay an estimated ad valorem tax of $2.4 million over the taxable investment, on their taxable investment over the grant period. Again, the actual tax value to the county will be calculated using the assessed value of the investment each year, depending on the depreciation schedule and the timing of the company's investments. This project achieves a cost-benefit ratio of 2.31 to 1 over the first five years of the grant period, and the cost-benefit goes and increases to 11.13 to 1 over the first ten years of the project. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors and staff recommend the award of this performance-based Step Four Economic Development Incentive Grant to ATI not to exceed $1,490,000 over the five-year period, again, beginning in fiscal year 2017. Tonight, we welcome Mr. Hunter Dalton, Executive Vice President of ATI and President of ATI Specialty Materials. He's available to answer any questions you may have about the company or the project.
Mr. Dalton, we would cherish the opportunity to continue working with you.
Thank you, sir.
There has no one signed up to speak at the public session, so we'll move to close the session. All in favor? Next, we have Police Week proclamation. The proclamation is included tonight, and we'll hear from Elizabeth Cook on the details of the proclamation. Ms. Cook?
Good evening, Madam Clerk, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the Union County Commissioners tonight about National Police Week 2015, and adoption of the Union County Police Week proclamation. I am Elizabeth Cook, Associate Member and Police Week Committee Member of the Monroe Union Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 19. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. This year, National Police Week will be May 10th through May 16th, 2015, and is the time to honor those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. May 15th is National Peace Officers Memorial Day. This year, 273 brave men and women will be added to the marble walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Of the 273 officers, 127 lost their lives in the line of duty in 2014. Two of those officers were from North Carolina. Excuse me. One of those being one of our own, Sergeant Jeffrey Wayne Green of the Union County Sheriff's Office, end of watch, November 19th, 2014. The remaining officers' names will be added who lost their lives in previous years and are being added to the memorial. The Union County Law Enforcement Memorial was dedicated in 2011 with the names of three officers from Union County. John Pierce, 1888 Monroe Police Department, Richmond Edgar Williams, 1917 Wingate Police Department, and Richard Belk, 2010 with Waxaw Police Department. This year, with a heavy heart, it saddens me that we will add Sergeant Jeffrey Green of the Union County Sheriff's Office to this memorial as well as the one in D.C. The ceremony has been moved up a week due to Sergeant Green's family and the Union County Law Enforcement family attending festivities in Washington, D.C. The Monroe Union Fraternal Order of Police will host the Union County Police Week candlelight ceremony in the Judicial Center Courtyard in front of the Union County Law Enforcement Memorial on Friday, May 8th, at approximately 7:30 P.M. We should recognize our law enforcement officers during this week to let them know that we appreciate them for their services 365 days a year. The National Police Week proclamation, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of Union County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Union County, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of Law Enforcement Agency of Union County unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, the Union County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of the Union County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of, we've added, May 8th through 16th as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who through their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an available and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of the citizens. The Union County Board of Commissioners further calls upon the citizens too of Union County to observe Friday, May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the 127 law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service of their community in 2014. One of those, Sergeant Jeffrey Wayne Green with the Union County Sheriff's Office, let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all fallen heroes. It is witness thereof, we have unto our, set our hands and caused the seal of the Union County to be affixed. In addition to the proclamation, I would like to ask the Commissioners to have the flags flown at half-staff not only on May 15th, but from Friday, May 8th through Saturday, May 16th for the Police Week, and especially in a little way for Union County to remember Sergeant Green. And I would like to invite everyone here tonight and the Commissioners to join us on May 8th for our ceremony in remembering all officers.
Ms. Cook, if you'll hold, yes. Well, go ahead.
Motion to adopt, adoption of the Police Week proclamation, and do we need to make a separate motion for the flag at half-staff, or can we just include that? And to fly the flag at half-staff and observances?
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, none.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you representing the law enforcement community. Clearly, they are a gentleman in our community, and we look forward to seeing you in a second.
Thank you. And I would like to add, please include blue in your, shine a blue light, fly a ribbon, put a candle with a blue light in your window. I do it 365, because law enforcement is very special to me, and they should be to all of you. But please, during Police Week, remember our guys and gals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next, I always have a little reservation on this. It's Older Americans Month. I've had a couple of my peer Commissioners remind me that it's, you know, I fit right in there. But Ms. B. Coulson and Ruth Helms, if y'all comes, you want to speak with us and share more on this?
I have with me tonight, my name's Ruth Helms, by the way. I used to sit in one of those chairs a long time ago, and I see you still have two, my great employees still employed here, okay? I'm here tonight with Patricia Kinley and with B. Coulson, and we serve on the Home and Community Block Grant and the Regional F Board that you appointed us to. And I also have with me Linda Smoski, who's Director of the Counsel Law Agency. I also serve as the delegate to the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and B serves as the alternate to the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. And our job is to recommend and to see, check out all the things that needs to be done in the county for the, for the older Americans. And that's, you know, as the baby boomers are hitting us, that's anybody 55 and older, it's getting to be a big crowd of people. Also, I want to thank you for, I'm not going to read this, I didn't come prepared to read it, but this Older Americans Act proclamation...
I'd like to share with you.
You have that here, okay? And the other thing I'd like to tell you is thank you for last year when we had our cuts to the Home and Community Block Grant, you stepped up the table and helped us, and we hope as you go back to your budget for 2015, 16, that you'll consider us again. We want to tell you that these monies are used for our seniors in transportation, in housing, in food, you know, the food banks where they go out and take the foods to the people, also the sites that we have. But one of the biggest things we notice now that we need is some housing. Senior housing is a big problem here, senior housing that they can afford. So we want to be able to go as far as we can that way. We know that if we keep these people in their homes where they want to be, we call it aging in place, that they are happier, and it saves you money, because majority of the ones that we help will eventually have to go on Medicaid. And you know what your Medicaid budget's like. With a nursing home running from anywhere from $7,000 or up a month, assisted livings $3,000 and up, that's a lot of money, and it doesn't take long, and even if they have the money, that they spend down and Medicaid has to take over. So if you can keep them in their home with a little help, and that's what our board does, it saves you money, and it saves the taxpayer. And I want to thank you again for letting us be here to speak tonight. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to share the proclamation with our community as well.
I have the other ladies here, they may want to say something.
Okay.
Maybe y'all like to say anything?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm B. Coulson, I live in Wingate, and I am a senior citizen, and I am proud of it. And I serve on this board as a volunteer, and I run back and forth between Charlotte, Raleigh, Shelby, Euston County as volunteers on our own money to just do what we can for seniors in Union County, and it is our pleasure to serve. And Patricia Kinley serves for us also. We meet three times a year, we go to Raleigh three times a year, and then we go all over our region, with our nine counties throughout the year, just to help out. And we are serving at your pleasure, and we are trying to just do what we can. It is my pleasure to be a member of that board, and thank you for all the help you do.
Thank you very much. Older Americans Month 2015, whereas Union County includes a thriving community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas Union County is committing to help all individuals live longer, healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible, and whereas since 1965, the Older Americans Act has provided services that help older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing existing medical and health care systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and support of some of the life's basic functions such as bathing or preparing meals, and whereas these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploration, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of Native American elders, and whereas we recognize the value of the community engagement and service in helping older American, older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to others, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages, promoting and engaging in activities, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now, therefore, the Union County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Older Americans Month in Union County, and urges every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. Adopted this day, 20th day of April 2015. Do I have a motion? We accept the resolution. All in favor? Let me... I might break this, you hear what he said? He asked if he could help me up.
Chairman Helms has really been proud of this thing today. We're really excited to have you here. And B, I'll tell you this, Clayton Loughlin has said good things about you forever, B.
Yeah. I don't get to come see y'all very often.
You know, one of the things of what it says, Union County is a county that people are begging to come to. I mean, they're moving from all over the country, and it's the older generation that helped build this county that makes it so attractive for everybody today. And I thank you very much for y'all bringing forth this.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you for your volunteer work.
Thank you so much.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Come on.
You're in the room too.
Oh, yeah.
He's another one of the Helmeses.
Half the oldest one here, what are you talking about?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Next, we'll go to informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they attend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are subject to public hearings and must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements of repetitive comments by the speakers...
And in the near future, you will all receive a picture of the mud holes and where the asphalt is falling away because of the mud holes. And I really appreciate being able to talk to all of you. You have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Teri Settle?
Hi, my name is Teri Settle. I live in Waxaw, and I'm going to, going to speak on the library also. I'm President of the Library Association of Waxaw. This is a nonprofit educational and charitable organization. The purpose is to raise funds to support the establishment of a new, larger library in Waxaw with expanded services. Furthermore, the Library Association of Waxaw shall maintain an association of persons interested in libraries to focus public attention on the library, to stimulate the use of the library's resources, to receive and encourage gifts, endowments, and requests to the library, to support and cooperate with the local library in developing library services and facilities for the community, and to support the freedom to read as expressed in the American Library Association Bill of Rights. The Library Association of Waxaw was formed in the spring of 2009 and received our 501(c)(3) status March 2012. We celebrated our fifth anniversary in September 2014 by presenting the Waxaw Library a check in the amount of $2,930 to purchase two headphones and an early literacy computer station. At that time, we also posted the names of 189 people in the store, thanking them for contributing their time and talents, supporting us by becoming members, volunteering in the store, helping us to move into our new location, or also by contributing financial support. Most of the money raised has come from the sale of used books donated to us by the Waxaw community and sold by volunteers in our used bookstore, the Waxaw Reading Room located at 201B West South Main Street in Waxaw. Except for the collectible books and some of the newer books, most are priced between 50 cents and $2. Our treasurer reported at our April board meeting that the total cash on hand as of March 31, 2015 was $80,642.49. Commissioners, our board invites you to visit the Waxaw Library to see for yourselves the community members using the computers, checking out books, attending the children's storytime, or attending book club, and the amount of space that is available for these activities and the lack of parking. We urge you to consider building a new, larger library for Waxaw and pledge our support.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next, Barbara Epps.
Hi, it's Barbara Epps, but that's closed. Thank you. I'm a resident of Waxaw, and I just wanted to say that Waxaw is such a growing, vibrant city. And so what we need to do is provide a library for all these people that are coming, like Richard Helm said, people want to come to live in Union County and Waxaw. That is such a big community, so we really need to provide something for the people there to come to, because, oh, I'm sorry, am I supposed to push this?
No, you're fine.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. This is my first. But anyhow, I go there once a week probably, and I, and I bring my granddaughter, and we, we just love the library, and I'm also with all those ladies, if you can see them all in white. So there are people here that want to see something done for the community. The other day, I had to go to the library, and what Pat was talking about, the parking is very minimal. There's probably five spaces, and maybe one of those is handicapped. Well, there's a school right across, if you've not been to the library, you really need to come so you can understand what we're talking about. But there's a school right across from the library, and it's a busy school, so you can't park there. So you need to go down where the, it's just like a small, little area that is really gutted with dirt and mud. And so I had probably six books, five audio books, five cassettes that we, you know, take out, and imagine somebody trying to carry all this and get into the library with not a viable parking space. So this is what we're talking about, when we would like to see something done for our community, because we all really appreciate the library, and we would really like to see Union County step up and give us a bigger, like my granddaughter said, if they could make it like Imagine On, and that's downtown Charlotte, we'd be real happy. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it. You all have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. And that concludes our informal comments for this evening. Next, we have addition, deletions, and our adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Yes, sir?
Chairman, I'd like to ask that we remove item 4G from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda.
4G?
4G.
Okay. Let's make that item 9A. Any additional changes? Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Move to adopt the amended agenda.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent as amended.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. One thing we probably should have, should have mentioned is that we will be, due to the time of our previous meeting, we do need to add the last item on our agenda to, to go into closed session, and let's put that at the end of the agenda so we don't hold our community up waiting for us to come back. I guess we need to re-vote on that then, probably, to that amended agenda.
What do you want to do?
Have closed session, last, last item, just after the manager's comments and the Commissioner's comments, and we'll go into closed session, the one we couldn't do earlier. Is there a motion to approve that amendment?
Motion to approve that amendment to the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we had a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent as amended.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. And we had a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, item under old business is Project Lone Star for a Step IV Modified Economic Development Incentive Grant. Miss Manager?
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, you heard a presentation just a little while ago from Chris Platae, our Economic Development Director. The recommendation on this item is to consider Project Lone Star for a Step IV Modified Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,960,000 over a 10-year period.
And may I add that we also authorize the County Manager to approve the agreement? Okay. Any discussion?
Who's going to make the motion?
Okay, I'll make it. I thought the manager. Consider Project Lone Star for a Step IV Modified Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,960,000 over a 10-year period, and authorize the County Manager to approve the agreement. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Thank you. Next, we have Project Pipe for a Step IV Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,490,000 over a 5-year period.
And as the Chairman and Commissioners will recall, Mr. Platae made a presentation on this item. It's ATI Specialty Materials. It is an incentive grant for a Step IV Economic Development Incentive in the amount not to exceed $1,490,000 over a 5-year period, and that is staff's recommendation as well as the, your Economic Development Committee's recommendation.
Make a motion, we consider Project Pipe for a Step IV Economic Incentive Grant in the amount of $1,490,000 over a 5-year period, and authorize County Manager to approve the agreement. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Does that need to be worded "not to exceed" or "in the amount"?
Not to exceed.
Not, did I read it wrong? It's the older, older citizen thing. Okay. Amount not to exceed $1,490,000 for a 5-year period, and authorize County Manager to approve the agreement. Oh, yes, sir?
Oh, I'd just like to make the comment that I certainly look forward to voting yes on this motion, approving the motion, and want to thank this longstanding company in Union County for their contributions to us economically. We really hope this works out. We appreciate you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Thank you, sir. Next item we have is consideration of rezoning petition, RZ 2015-001, requesting rezoning of 3.756 acres of property, tax parcel 0618320 and 06183-003 from R40 to B2. Yes, sir? Commissioner, question?
Make a motion to rezone the property that was stated in the action. Do I need to read, you want me to read everything, Jer, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rezone the, approve the rezoning request of 3.756 acres of property, tax parcel 0613800 and 06183003 from R40 to B2, community business and adoption of applicable assistancy statement.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Next, we have item 8, Resolution Requesting that Union County Board of Elections Hold Elections Regarding the Countywide Sale of Certain Types of Alcohol and Operation of ABC Stores, based on Public Hearing Held on April 6, 2015. Commissioner, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In discussions over what we've heard through public hearings and discussions with members of the community, I think we can accomplish the same task, which is to get approval in 2020, when the population of Union County will be close to the number that three Commissioners can approve this. I think if we just do the malt beverage on sale, on premises sale, and then, or Jeff, you're going to have to help me here, I don't have this in my statement here. There's a, on, the off premises is where you sell it inside and you, and you have to...
Consume it off premises, correct.
Right, so off premises for malt beverages, and then use on or off premises for wine. That way we can accommodate vineyards and agricultural purposes.
Any further discussion?
So I understand it, the motion is to approve malt sales and wine sales and consumption, but not malt sales? Or malt consumption? That would, that would allow for grocery stores, that would allow their use. The reason with wine on premises is because vineyards may have, you know, you have wine tastings at vineyards, and there's, there's few vineyards that we have that are up and coming or getting ready, so have it where they can, they can do it there. I, just my comment would be, if we're going to allow wine sales and consumption, that malt beverage sales and consumption, I'm okay with excluding ABC stores or mixed beverages. So you want to do on and off premises? For the malt beverages.
Do you have a comment for us, Jeff?
That's, that would be an amendment to the motion.
I didn't make a motion yet.
The motion hasn't been made yet.
Just discussing.
I, I know I've spoken with several individuals, this is a economic issue and an equality issue that we can help the county with. There's a number of locations in the county that will never have a grocery store, or sometimes a convenience store because of inability to sell beer and wine. So, and I think I've been explained that, that a grocery store brings about 150 jobs, not all full-time, but about 150 jobs for each grocery store. So, Jeff, if you can help us with clarifying this emotion, we were just talking to approve beer and wine and malt beverage sales in the county.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
And this will be a referendum, we're, it's not something we're voting into place today, it is allowing our public to vote on whether or not they want to support this.
A resolution request a referendum at the earliest possible time in 2016, which is, that date has not been set yet, so that'll come back to you at a future date, it would be the presidential election.
Okay.
The primary for that has not been established, it'll, there's a, there's a bill pending that would make that the first week of March. So we'll return that to you at some future time for your approval of that, because it is required by statute. The resolution that's in your packet includes all of the possibilities that you can vote on. My understanding is that the board is interested in malt beverages and unfortified wine, which are the first two items. And it's further my understanding that you want to vote for both on and off premises for both of those, is that correct? All right. If you would look with me on the first page of the resolution, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. For malt beverage elections, you can have on and off premises, that's one vote, you can have on premises, another option, off premises, and then there's a fourth option. But what I understand you to be saying is that you want it to be just the first option, which is both on and off premises. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the same would be true for unfortified wine. You want only, the issue to appear would be both on and off premises.
That's correct.
Okay.
I understand.
And one other point, the, the resolution again is all of the options, so I would need to modify the recitals just slightly to reflect that you're only voting on those two things. If you look at the last recital, that's the whereas clause right before now, therefore. We would remove the part about the operation of ABC stores and the sale of mixed beverages that would come out, and that's what you would be voting on. I would get a clean resolution to the Chairman to sign.
Okay. Need a clean one to be able to quote.
Do you want me to read that recital?
If you would, please.
Sure. That would say then, as modified, whereas the Union County Board of Commissioners, the governing board of Union County, desires to give the citizens of Union County the opportunity to vote to determine whether the sale of malt beverages and the sale of unfortified wine should be permitted throughout Union County in accordance with Chapter 18b of the North Carolina General Statutes and the proposition set forth below. And those would be the two propositions.
Okay.
Both on and off premises for both malt beverages and unfortified wine.
And the actual date will have to come back to for further approval?
We'll need to bring the date back to you, if you want it to be the first meeting, I mean, the first opportunity in, in 2016.
Any discussion on the motion as read by Mr. Crook?
Your motion, sir, would be to approve the resolution which requests the election of the Board of Elections. So you'd be, your motion would be to approve the resolution as modified.
Okay. I'm going to read that. So we make a motion to adopt the resolution requesting Union County Board of Elections hold elections regarding the countywide sale of on premises and off premises beer.
We'll stop the resolution. If you look at the title, we'll just stop... We'll stop the resolution. If you look at the title, we'll just stop it after alcohol.
Okay.
Certain types of alcohol, period. We'll take out an operation of ABC stores.
Okay. And move that we allow the referendum?
Prove the resolution as modified.
Okay. Adopt a resolution requesting the Union County Board of Elections hold elections regarding the countywide sale of types of alcohol as modified. And that's sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That was fine. Next, discussion on alcohol issues. Commissioner Rushing?
At our last public hearing, when we discussed an alcohol referendum, we had some input from the public and some concerns from the sheriff's department that we discussed. The... There's some information that came from the sheriff in discussions with him about his concerns over alcohol sales at the Ag Center and also the amount of coverage that we have for alcohol law enforcement officers in Union County. Right now, it's my understanding from Captain Linto's email to Commissioner Aikmas that there's only one agent in the county. We need to take a look, and you know, I would almost think that we should probably connect the alcohol referendum in with our county policy of saying if our folks don't approve alcohol referendum, we probably shouldn't sell it on county property as well, or shouldn't have it where it's available on county properties, in specific the Ag Center. So my motion would be that we cease alcohol at the Ag Center until the voters approve a referendum. If the voters disapprove referendum, then we can take that as clear direction that the public does not want alcohol sales at the Ag Center. And it's my understanding that the Ag Center is the only place that we currently have alcohol.
County-owned property, yes, that we... In which we serve.
May I add a question?
Yes, sir.
What about the community college, Madam Chair? Commissioner Manager?
I have been to events there. I'm not sure if I've ever been to an event, and I really don't know. I apologize. I do not know if they have events there that they serve alcohol.
If... I would be glad to include those as well.
Commissioner Rushing, what I seem to remember is, wasn't there a request that... Mr. Bailey, were you to address some of these issues for us? Because I spoke with Sheriff Kathy, and I thought we were going to have somebody. Are you here to? Or am I putting you on the spot?
Deputy Chief Bailey was requested to be here at my bequest, based upon board direction, to answer any questions or provide any additional information that the board desired on this issue.
That's correct. Thank you, Madam Chair or Madam Manager. My presence here tonight is simply to answer what I can on behalf of our agency in terms of what our capabilities are, as well as, obviously, with what you're proposing, the majority of the enforcement through chapter... And correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, would come through chapter 18B of the statutes would be through the North Carolina ABC Commission. Commissioner Rushing, to speak to your earlier point about the one ALE officer assigned to Union County, that doesn't sound like a lot, except when you take into account there are only 110 sworn ALE officers statewide. So we, you know, if you put one per county, we've got our officer in the county. But I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have regarding the our capabilities or our operations with regard to current enforcement activities, but the sheriff's intent is to abide by the ordinance that... Or the resolution as it is approved by the board, so.
Are we currently having any issues on county property now, the Ag Center or community college?
We've been fortunate with the Ag Center in that occasionally we may have an attempt at an underage consumption or something like that. Fortunately, we've been able to require security onsite. However, you can understandably see that it makes us nervous providing security at an event where an alcohol is served because of the potential liability.
Chief Deputy, isn't it true that the holder of the event provides that security at their cost and not at a cost to the taxpayer?
That is correct.
Thank you.
If I might just speak to the motion for just a moment. We do have events scheduled at the event center that have probably already been advertised and probably advertised with the service of wine, beer, or and/or mixed drinks, and so I would think that we would have to provide some degree of notice if this motion were to pass in order to adequately plan and address that issue for upcoming events.
I also have had conversations with the sheriff, and he expressed some of the very similar concerns. I've also had the opportunity with... Sit with Marty and Jeff and talk about some of the things that we... Concerns that were addressed of possibly the serving of the alcohol. I think one of the things that we talked about, Jeff, was that the ABC license holder has to provide insurance bond to do the function. What is not in place that maybe we should look at is that the server doesn't have to have that same insurance. And we talked about that. I don't know if you've had time to research that.
Right. Let me clarify that. The server is required to have the same insurance that the caterer has, so all of the alcohol insurance requirements are in place for that person as well. What we discussed was having them provide a certificate of insurance for the county directly to us to make sure that we can confirm that. And when we did look into that issue, we found that that's already being done.
Okay, so if you as a subcontractor did the actual do the serving, they have to have the insurance as well?
Requires insurance, and we also require evidence of the insurance through a certificate.
Okay, good.
So, Mr. Crook, what's the county's liability? If they provide what they're supposed to, what's the county's liability?
I would tell you in open session that we try very hard in our contracts to be very tight and to address all the liability issues that we can. It's about risk transfer, and I think that we've, in coordination with our risk management office, we've done the most that we can to make those contracts tight. You never get rid of all liability, and if you'd like to discuss it further, I'd suggest we do it in closed section.
In your opinion, is it acceptable?
The contracts are as tight as I can make them.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, we talk... Give us an idea, like with alcohol sales, you have alcohol consumption there. What's the typical event that you would have alcohol at the Ag Center? It can range from private parties to a nonprofit fundraiser. It just depends on the event and the ability of that particular contractor to be able to secure a special permit from the state.
Not really fair to you under this, but you make an answer to this question, so I'll ask you in the way it was put to me. The sheriff indicated that there had been some, I guess, like concert-type activities where maybe there was alcohol being served in a concert-type atmosphere. Have you seen that, or is that just something he had discussed, or?
No, we actually had a... In the history, I believe, we've had one event, one concert event, if my memory serves me correctly, where...
I thought that was the case.
The... You know, one of the things in Captain Linto's email was he was concerned with our convenience stores out in the county and with the revenues that were there and increase in danger. So I do want to say that, you know, if we can't... If our citizens don't want our convenience stores in the county to do this, I think that they would probably also not agree with it on county property. And again, I stand by that motion. I think if it's a safety consideration that the people feel is a safety problem, like we heard from at our public hearing, I will say that more people have called me to not end their fundraisers' alcohol consumption than called me to complain about the referendum, so that is... It was just something interesting to it, but I just don't see the point in being... Telling our convenience stores that you can't do it while we allow it ourselves.
Chairman? I'm sorry, Jerry.
Sit on both sides of this issue, and we worked long and hard at the Ag Center with the legal department. We had the eight state ALE officers come and speak to our group. We made every effort and turned and left no stone unturned in an effort to provide opportunities in Union County for nonprofits, Union Academy, Arts Council, the list goes on and on, of organizations who want to use the Ag Center. It's an economical location for those folks to meet, to work together, and to raise funds that contribute to this community. I believe Ben just stated that there had been no significant issues with regard to alcohol consumption at the Ag Center. Now, I voted against countywide beer sales and beer consumption, not from a moral issue or an economic development issue, but from the standpoint that the folks that have always supported me, I defer to them about their feelings on that issue. But I don't... I think it's apples and oranges. I think to arbitrarily stop the use of alcohol at the Ag Center by a legitimate group until we have a referendum is absolutely ridiculous.
Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was brought up at our public hearing as a problem and an issue and a reason not to have a referendum at our last meeting, in that we did not have this email from the sheriff's department at that time, but I did acquire it the next day. And I'll repeat in that email, the ALE presence, and this is from Captain Linto, sent to Commissioner Aikmas, "The ALE presence in Union County is minimal, and their enforcement actions almost nonexistent." I won't pretend to understand this, but I will tell you there's one agent assigned to Union County. The undercover alcohol campaigns that I run, Ben, Captain Linto, about two or three times per year are county-wide, also encompassing the cities. So, you know, we do have some issues that were brought out at the public hearing, and if that is the issue, if safety is the issue, you know, we have an opportunity to address the safety issues. If it's not a safety issue, then I have no problem. So in your opinion, and in the opinion of the sheriff's department, is there a safety issue at all with alcohol sales at the Union County Agriculture Center? Well, again, we... In all fairness to the ALE, as I said before, there are only 110 of them statewide. They're spread pretty thin, and so the actual... In order to perhaps provide a little clarification, a little focus as to Captain Linto's comment regarding that, they typically work together in groups. You know, they work with backup. So when they're not... If we don't have something going on in Union County, our officer may be assisting in Mecklenburg or Stanley or Anson. Likewise, when they conduct operations here, they pull in from other counties as well. We do our own exercises independently of them because we feel that that's what the community expects. We make every effort to conduct our underage campaigns, to try to root out convenience stores that would put alcohol into the hands of minors. With regard to, you know... With regard to alcohol being a hazard at the Ag Center, you know, as I said before, I think Commissioner Simpson said very succinctly earlier that he... That we worked exhaustively to try to tighten the process as tightly as we could with regard to the requirements of the people who would be serving that alcohol. And to date, we have had no significant incident involving dispensing of alcohol at that facility. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Chief Deputy, what... Is it typical for an ALE officer to show up at a private event at the Ag Center?
They have the capability to, and I know that they have before.
Okay. Is that a standard practice that they go to every event at the Ag Center?
They can't attend every event.
Okay.
They don't have the capability to do it.
So, at the expense of the holder of the function, there is sworn deputies on premises there when alcohol is served. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we have the manpower at those functions that non-taxpayers are paying for, potentially non-taxpayers?
That's correct.
Okay.
But again, in all fairness, Commissioner, a uniformed officer versus a plainclothes...
Oh, I understand.
Catching violations would be a potentially different matter.
Sure. I clearly understand that.
A uniform obviously would be more of a deterrent, but...
Sure. Okay. I just want to be very clear that, you know, the thought process between the limited exposure of ALE, if you're going to pass alcohol sales in the county, you need to prepare budgetarily to have officers out in the county to enforce that.
That would be correct.
That would be correct. But to arbitrarily decide this, to penalize a private entity who wants to rent a facility that our attorneys have stated they've made the damn contract as tight as they can, is about the most asinine thing I've ever heard of.
Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, Commissioner Aikmas challenged us that we did not talk to the sheriff. I spoke to the sheriff over two months ago about this issue, and he stated to me that he does not want alcohol sales at the Union County Ag Center. When challenged to investigate, that's what I did, and the sheriff told me that he did not want alcohol sales at the Union County Ag Center. Now, I'd be glad to just say maybe we need to look at tightening it up, but when told to do something, I did it. And the... Did not come back what I thought. And trust me, there's a lot of organizations that I work with that we do firearms transfers on a volunteer basis, Ducks Unlimited, Quality Deer Management Association, that have alcohol at their functions. But I also work with one of the most successful fundraisers in Union County. It's called the National Rifle Association Friends NRA Bank that raises $80,000 in their events or more without alcohol. So is alcohol a necessity? Does alcohol improve the fundraiser, or is it a safety issue? So if it's an enhancer of the economy and if it's an enhancer of the function, that's one thing, but if it's a safety issue, it's another thing. So I just want to make sure and clear that it's not a safety issue like we were told at the last meeting. In all fairness, Commissioner, I wasn't present at the last meeting, you know, and I wasn't present with your conversation. Have you heard the sheriff make the statement that he did not want alcohol sales at the Ag Center? I don't recall. I have. Have you? I have. Have you, Commissioner Hens?
He told me he would prefer it not. But one thing he did point out, and we talked about the officers that so graciously worked those events, and we do appreciate that, but one of the things that we were discussing is that the legality of some of the alcohol that was served, and he said his officers can't manage that. That's not y'all's responsibility.
That's correct. That's not our bailiwick.
And I understand that. So, and we had had a lengthy conversation with Jeff, and there was some things I think we can do better to enhance, to improve the safety of our public that attends these. But I have to agree that with we've got events, and Marty, when we talked early on, one of the things I told you, don't interfere with these people that have scheduled and got something going. I'd like to possibly amend your motion in that we focus on adherence to our contract at the Ag Center, and then we review this after the referendum. Is that satisfactory?
Substantive motion?
Yes.
So, let me understand your motion. Explain it to me in layman detail. Are you saying take it off the table?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask that the parties associated with the agricultural center focus on making sure there is adherence to our contract.
Are we talking about only those that are currently have contracts, or potentially any additional contracts that may be extended between now and the time of the referendum?
Between now and the referendum, whatever party is...
So, we can still continue to sign contracts?
That's correct.
All right.
But it is a focus because you and I both know, we've been to events there where excessive alcohol was served. That was my concern. And we don't need to do that. And we can't ask our deputies to police how many drinks a person has. But the staff that's putting it on, we need to hold our customers, as you call it, accountable to follow ABC rules, is all I'm asking.
So, do we need a motion, or is this just asking staff to...
It's a substantive motion to, because his original motion said we stop alcohol sales until the referendum.
He made a substantive motion to study it until the referendum.
Yep. Further discussion?
Can you clarify the motion again?
[laughing]
If my understanding is correct, your motion to stop alcohol sales at the Ag Center?
Until the referendum.
Until the referendum is off the table.
Yes.
But we're pursuing. So, to make it a clean motion, would we not just take your motion off the table and put a updated motion?
Yeah, I'll remove my motion if that's what you want.
I'd feel better with that.
It's at the, the person making the motion can make that decision.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Draw your motion.
Prefer to his.
Okay, so there's no motion on the table.
And the motion is to ask the Ag facility with their contracts to ensure that contracts are adhered to, and that appropriate alcohol consumption, sourcing and consumption is followed.
And how do you recommend that we do that? I mean, because that's going to be the obvious question. If you're going to ask people to limit the amount of alcohol, then you're going to have to tell them how you're going to do that. Or you could leave it alone and go on about your business.
Or we could go back to Commissioner Rush's and take it off the table completely.
Or you can drop the whole thing and forget it.
Like Commissioner Rush said, it was made an issue as a safety issue, and we cannot...
It was made an issue at the Ag Center. Or was it made an issue that if we passed a referendum, we didn't have the budgetary needs to provide enforcement across the county? I believe that was the issue that was raised. Had nothing to do with alcohol at the Ag Center.
Well, you know, it was raised as alcohol in general, and alcohol at the Ag Center is a part of alcohol policy of this county.
It was raised regarding a countywide referendum. Do we have the budgetary needs in place to provide enforcement across the county? Period. I raised the issue. I know what the issue was.
Why would you put the budgetary in place before the voters even approve it?
Well, I know that seems to be a foreign concept to this board, because we like to go ahead and write contracts and then to figure out how we're going to pay for something. But that's not the way we do it at my house.
Well, the voters haven't approved it, Commissioner Aikman.
If you're going to do something, you need to be able to pay for it. So, are you going to have to raise taxes to pay for additional policing?
Let me, I'll tell you this, out of Captain Linto's email, increased profits, Captain Linto says, "I could see these rural stores becoming very appealing targets for armed robberies due to increased tax flow."
Right. So, you're going to need additional deputies.
So, we have grocery stores in the county that are going to bring in economic revenue. We have convenience stores that can stay open instead of shutting down every three years that are going to bring in tax revenue. And we don't even have an approved referendum yet. But in a few short years, three county commissioners can say yes and not worry about what the people say. And I think that the people need their say before that comes about.
Well, that's already approved. The referendum's done.
We already take care of that. That was kind of putting the horse before the cart or cart before the horse, however you want to say it.
And as for how to enforce it, you know, there's not an easy way. I would just ask the Ag Center to stress following the rules, as opposed to cutting it off completely right now.
And what are the rules?
Well, there are contract obligations. There are...
Does the contract specifically state the amount of alcohol that each person there can consume?
But ABC laws do.
So, who's enforcing it? ABC laws or our contract?
I think that's a good question, Mr. Chairman. Probably the vendor, the alcohol person serving the alcohol has that responsibility. So, maybe that's why we need to tighten up who's serving the alcohol.
Does our current contract mention following the ABC laws?
Yes, it requires compliance with all alcohol laws.
And what do the ABC laws state regarding to the amount of alcohol that can be provided to an individual consumer?
I'm sorry, I can't answer.
I think we're just opening a can of worms that we need to stay out of unless we got all the facts.
Call a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's vote on the motion.
And the motion is to ask, yes, sir?
Motion to call the question first. Procedural motion. Vote on the motion to call, and then vote on the substantive.
Okay. Motion to call the vote?
Call a question.
Call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Now, the motion to vote on the request that we encourage our vendors to follow ABC rules and regulations a little more stringently than we have in the past, because we don't want your officers having to deal with that. But ABC rules for bartenders and everything is very clear. You can't serve to intoxicated individuals. And that's not always been the case. And we need to follow those rules, is what I'm saying. So, we call that all.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
To ask that our Ag Center instruct their clients on the urgency of following the contract and ABC laws on serving alcohol to people that are intoxicated. Yes, sir?
Point of clarification from legal counsel. Are we not then admitting that we have a flawed contract, or can we not simply sign a contract and have the folks abide by the contract?
My understanding is that the request is for additional, maybe overt, actions to remind people of their obligations. I don't know if that's through signage. I think it's been referred to the Ag Center for exploring those types of options. It's my understanding of the motion.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Next, we've got item 4G that was moved to 98. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Appreciate you, sir. And this is building security and access policy. On September 2, 2014, the Board of Commissioners adopted Union County Building Security and Access Policy. The policy stipulated the Board of Commissioners would determine the appropriate access and level to be granted to its members. All board members shall be provided the same access, with no member having greater than another. Based on the Board's actions, September 2 was granted the following areas: ground level access, two readers, BOC conference room, first floor, government center, front employee entrance near HR, county manager's suite, and senior staff's suite. Now, that's not to be confused with his offices. That's just the hallway. The expanded request was to include, and you have, I need your book that has those in that list of locations. Is that it? Apologize for one second.
I've got them here if you'd like.
The new ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to include the planning office, accounts, and metering offices, stormwater offices, engineering, administrative offices of public works, public works, CIP, main floor of the finance department, finance director's door, finance staff entrance, internal audit department, fire service, GIS department, and IT department doors.
Those are all hallways. No IT centers, no check storage areas or anything. That's all just basic hallways. So, if a commissioner has the opportunity and schedule to meet with an individual of those departments, they get off the elevator and they go through the doorway to go to their office. That's all it is. Commissioner Rush?
I might can make an easier motion.
Thank you.
Motion to approve access to county commissioners to every area that's in access to the county manager.
That's pretty limited. Sorry.
Well, if we're limited to that...
You won't need this.
No, I don't have access to most of those areas.
But I don't want access to anywhere you don't have. So, that's the motion. Access to, grant access to anywhere that the county manager has access to.
And maybe we need to pull this...
What areas are those, Madam Manager?
My office.
I don't want access to your office.
The county manager, well, not my direct office, but the suite on both sides of the ninth floor.
Which we already have access to.
Yes. Mr. Crook's suite. I can get into Jeff Yates, just the side where his staff is for budget. I cannot get into where checks are done, or I have to go through someone in order to access that area.
Do I only get any access to IT?
I do not. I have no access to IT. I'm trying to think. That may be the limit of my access, as well as the entrance doors on HR, the back entrance doors, the conference room. But that's...
I think one of the doors was, as we come in the back door, I think Brian, you're the hallway, there's a badge access right there. That was one of them that was requested.
We already have access to that.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do. Came in tonight, sir.
No, not the one to Brian's hallway.
The exterior entrance.
Then you come in the exterior entrance, on the right, there's a badge access to Mr. Matthews' department.
If you want to go through the back, if you want to go into the back entrance to growth management, there is a card reader there. I don't have access to that. I go through the front door.
I, you know, none of these are anything other than hallway access. And the opportunity to discuss with staff is very beneficial in making the appropriate calls that we have to make. And if you want to limit it just to be able to come see Jeff, I don't have a problem with that. When I ask for this, I ask for hallways. And sometimes I need to go see Mr. Helms in IT and have access to his, to go in the hallway, go into their offices. I don't see any exposure from a commissioner being able to access basic hallways of the government center. And by the way, all of these are located in this building. There's none outside in DHS or any other facility at all. So, I make a motion that we accept these new locations to allow all commissioners and the manager...
I thought we already had a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry. Repeat your motion, please.
To give the county commissioners access to the same areas that the county manager would have access to.
I won't challenge that.
Substantive motion.
Yep. It's clearly an enhancement to what we have today. Any further... Go ahead.
I would say, I would say this, that, you know, the whole reason behind this was not to interrupt an employee in doing their job or whatever, I think. And I think that's a noble gesture, but at the same time, I have to interrupt two employees to get to see Jeff. You know, if I come to see Jeff, I just can't go through. And I don't have to do it with the attorney, but to go see Jeff, I have to go get another employee and interrupt them and stop them from what they're doing and go get them to open the door for me so I can go ahead and interrupt Jeff. And I just try to interrupt Jeff Yates. So, it is kind of, you know, I'm not asking for access that the cleaning crew has. I'm asking just for access that the county manager has. I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to grant access that the manager has to the commissioners?
And would she state again her access? Is Risk here?
They are not.
What would, I need to know what the opinion of Risk would be.
I did, since Risk wrote the original policy and presented it to the board, I did send an email to our new Risk manager. And the responses were general. They said, "Providing access to any employee not otherwise working in a department where there's confidential, proprietary, legal, or personally identifiable information that could be stored, that they would suggest that not be granted." Stated that cyber insurance was recently purchased, but that, so relating to the IT area, that we may want to exclude those areas covered under that insurance policy.
And you said you did not have...
I don't have access to that, no. Let's see what else he says here.
Do you have access to any of the areas that they consider at risk?
No. Where do I have access to?
You have access to our offices. We have all the PAFs.
I don't have access to your finance site.
The back hallway, now that we did the PAF review.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we should...
You don't realize it.
I didn't realize. I thought it was on the other side of the house. Okay.
You have personnel information. One of the reasons why finance is limited.
But I'm the final authority on all that information, so...
You have it.
Okay.
But the sensitive information that...
We're not talking about personal...
Okay.
...personal social security numbers.
Okay.
All that information flows through our entire office because of the way that personnel writing forms go before they get to you finally. It used to be when that policy was written, they didn't get flowed that way, but they do now flow through both sides of our offices.
Okay. So, I do have access to that area.
You have access to...
But I am the final signatory on all PAFs.
You do have to sign all the offices.
Okay. Then they said, "Concerns about providing 24/7 access to areas where there's check start signature cards, et cetera, are stored. That could be of concern to our underwriter." And then also said, "If access was granted to commissioners, depending on how broadly, that it should be limited to normal business hours."
I agree with normal business hours.
So, your question was, "Where do I have access?" It is to the ninth floor, both Mr. Crook's area and my area, to the seventh floor, where Mr. Yates' office and the budget staff is located, the two rear entrances, the entrance near HR. I believe that is it.
And the only one that you have access to that we don't need access to is...
Well, if you have access to Jeff, that is where the personal information he was talking about is housed. talking about is housed with the staff back there.
Does the cleaning... Does the cleaning crew have access to it?
The cleaning crew is everywhere.
I'd offer a friendly amendment. I'd offer that we leave the policy as it stands today.
That'd be contrary to the motion, so...
Well, I think we have the same access to the county manager that less access to Jeff's.
Jeff, you don't keep that room locked? Is that not something... I mean, anybody can just walk in there?
You'd have a key.
Multiple key carded doors, so...
Is it behind... Is it behind another key carded door additional to the hallway?
Not the PAF. No, not necessarily the PAF.
So it's important.
Or records, so...
It's sensitive, but not that sensitive.
It's sensitive because we keep it behind locked doors. And once you get behind the locked doors, we don't triple lock it.
Does the hallway grant you access to that information?
Yes, it does. Because we have... My floor is designed as an open floor. Even on the back hallway, we have multiple queues in offices. So we don't... I don't secondarily lock those doors because I have multiple people visiting and out constantly from my staff, but they all have access to that information. We don't have offices necessarily, except in that back hallway for finance. So we have cubicles and we don't secure... There's no way to secure a cubicle. That's why we have the key carded doors the way we do.
So all employees in finance have access to the PAFs? Even the ones who should not have access?
They all touch them at some point in the process because we run payroll, checks, all that information, all the consistent tax information. At some point, everyone in our department has a responsibility due to segregation. We'll have a responsibility in that process along the way. Now, they don't have to touch every piece, but everybody has some form of responsibility to either be a check or to originate or to verify or to put in the system or to verify fundings available that...
These are paper documents that they have access to?
Yes.
So they... If they're loading one piece, they could be... They're accessing the entire document.
Yes. And they come down and they still come in paper form, working through that aspect of it. But all the PAF, Personal Action Forms, that we have to approve them all as to fundability based on the general statutes related to pre-audit. So that used to not occur until some recent court cases, which we started July 1st of this fiscal year. And those used to not come through. So in the budget office, you didn't have personnel, personal information for employees. That is new starting July 1 of this year. So now Andrea and Chris and the folks in my office actually do touch those personal forms, so...
Then I would offer a friendly amendment that we have access to everything the county manager has with the exception of the area with the PAFs.
And I do need to make one correction. I do have access to the hallway that leads to Mr. Gosicki's office on Public Works. So on the admin side, I do have that as well.
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next item is item, New Business, Item 10. Create a recommended capacity level or policy where capacity is restricted to non-residential products until permitted utility expansions are under construction. Commissioner Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked about this in years past. We ran out of commercial capacity and it's something that we don't want to do again. So there was a... We discussed this about creating a cap level that we... That we put in place and the staff, through the staff's recommendation. So I would make the motion to direct staff to create a recommended capacity level policy to restrict capacity to non-residential products until permitted utility expansion projects are under construction.
Any discussion?
Do we have a capacity issue right now?
No, sir, we do not.
Pardon?
No, sir, we do not.
By doing this, could we create a capacity issue prior to a normal timeframe which would force us to build capacity sooner?
The state establishes presently certain parameters you have to meet on wastewater as to when you have to be in design, under construction, et cetera, in order to permit against a facility. And it's... And I would... I'm sorry, I don't... Can't quote it for you, but I know 80% there's a requirement, 90% there's a requirement. If you made the requirements on the wastewater side more restrictive than the state requires, you could find yourself having to build capacity potentially before you would need that capacity. On the water side of the House, the state doesn't have any regulations. But typically, we follow generally the same guidelines that we have on wastewater.
Thank you.
If a policy was developed that would follow the requirements for the construction timeline, do you see any issues with that that could cause capacity issues?
If... I think if you follow the state guidelines, I think we would be fine because that's what we follow presently.
And with this, I believe I understand the purpose. And my thoughts would be, put something in place that would then help us control that growth or at least direct it towards commercial that would be available when we run into those situations. Hopefully, with the long-term plan that's in place, we would not have to use it.
I agree. Commissioner Rushing.
I agree with what he just said. I was here before when it did happen, so I learned from experience that it's not fun when you have a big commercial project that comes and says that the state's turned them down for sewer. So it's better to get ahead of it instead of behind it and be proactive with it. It's a tool for the Board to get more information and it's going to be a... It's something that we need to make sure that if we have roofs, let's see, whether it's a commercial follows rooftops, not if there's no water or sewer available. So we need to make sure that the water sewer is available if we get into a situation like we have been in the past.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So what's the change?
The staff... The motion was to direct staff to create a recommended capacity level. So they... The staff would come back to us with a recommendation on what level that that should be at.
Beyond what the state level is, which is what they currently have here.
And it could be the state level, maybe what staff recommends, but whatever's a... You know, the key is that once we reach that level, that we're not continuing to permit residential at the expense of commercial projects that could be coming in.
Can you include in the motion to have the policy follow state requirements?
Yeah, they would have... You'd have to follow the state requirements.
If you're going to follow the state, then what's the need for an additional policy?
Well, actually, the state doesn't say you have to reserve for non-residential.
Okay. So you want to change beyond what the state requires?
Want to make sure that we are... When we get to a level, the state has a level, like a watch level, like kind of like schools, watch level, cap level, that kind of stuff. You have to be doing certain things at certain periods of time, like, what, at 80... Ed's not here, but at a certain percentage, like 80 percentage, you better be planning it out. At 90%, you better be under construction, something of that nature. So what we would do is like at... Maybe it's 85%. Then we say, "No additional permits issued" when we get to 85% permitted and pending. Maybe 90% permitted and pending, that we're still holding that reserved capacity. But that's for the staff to come back and recommend at what capacity they feel safe. And Jeff and I have been through this, so we... There is a need. I know you might not trust me on it, but there is definitely a need for this. And it's not tomorrow. It's, you know, it could be years down the road, but when you get there, you need to make sure you have that for an industrial project or a commercial project. If it's not there, it's disheartening.
So I guess my first question would be, what are we not doing to prepare us for the future right now?
We are not reserving commercial capacity. And this will answer that. We're not reserving commercial capacity. If we... If something happens and we cannot expand and we don't have commercial capacity reserved, then we get the rooftops and we don't get the commercial.
Right. But I guess where I'm confused is if you get the rooftops and you identify a need for capacity for future growth, wouldn't you at that time work on additional capacity?
You would work on it, but you may not get it. Interbasin transfers, sewer permitting. I've seen instances where the federal government has halted us from permitting sewer. So I've lived through some things maybe and seen some things that you weren't familiar with.
Well, I agree, but I mean, that was also however many years ago, and I'd like to think we're a little more advanced than what we were.
You would like to think, and that's why we want to make sure of that. We want to put some policy in place to ensure that.
I think that's very appropriate, and I think Mr. Platae will probably agree that if we don't have sewer capacity, we can't bring industrial and economic growth to the county if there's not sewer capacity. Is that a fair statement? If you don't have capacity, you can't bring these entities like we discussed tonight to the county.
And I'll again state, we don't have a capacity issue right now.
Well, if all the permits were to come online, would we be over capacity right now?
If everything that is permitted or is on a list that may have purchased capacity or been put on a list, and I'm sorry, Jeff, you may have to help me here, put on a list when we were in the moratorium and may have paid a portion of their capacity fees, which there's... I know there's a deadline where they're going to have to come in and either pay their fees or give up their capacity allocation. That's the process we're in now. It may be 100,000 to 200,000 gallons over... Pardon me?
Per day?
Yes. However, I would tell you that when you look at capacity, when we... When I sign off on an agreement with a developer for capacity, and if it's a residential development, it may be five years before we see that flow. So it may be permitted or may be on a list for future capacity purchase, which is what that list really is, because I still have to fulfill a fee commitment in order to be able to use that capacity and actually have a deener permit issued. So it's under all those parameters that you have to look at. So... And since we have a permit right now for the expansion of 12 Mile Creek, taking it from 6 to 12 million gallons, and we already have started the first phase of that expansion, I would say that under those circumstances, our situation is highly unlikely to be a problem in the near future or even in the distant future. I think we've done, as you mentioned in your comments, we've done a lot of long-range planning, both in the water and wastewater side. And as the presentation that Mr. Gosicki made probably about a month ago, where he showed you all the various projects and where we are and where our capacity hurdles were and in what year, this staff has taken it very seriously.
I look at this as a long-term... And I actually haven't had any conversation with Vice Chair Rushing, but I think, Jeff, you'd made a comment before. It's better to put a policy in place now when there's not an issue than rush to put it in place when there is one and make it look like it's being punitive or open us up for some legal issues. And that's why I would support this motion, as long as we follow the general guidelines by the state and we put something in place that I think is fair.
I agree. Planning is much better than reacting. So call for a vote on the motion.
Restate the motion, please. Motion is direct staff to create a recommended capacity level policy to restrict capacity to non-residential projects until permitted utility expansion projects are under construction.
Okay. All in favor?
Counselor.
I'm sorry. Was there not an amendment to that that was accepted?
Yes.
If so, I move Mr. ...
To develop that policy in accordance with the state guidelines.
Okay. Thank you for the correction. All in favor with the... For the motion as amended? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Number 11. Create a grading scale for new projects that use county-owned utilities. Commissioner Rushing.
Thank you. This was another item that we had talked about. One thing that we find when we have a rezoning request, a lot of times we'll have an emotional argument versus a data-driven argument. So not only with our rezonings, but as information for the towns, I would like for staff to direct... Staff to develop a recommended scale based on the cost benefit of projects that use county-owned utilities. If we... I feel like if we do this, we can get a, you know, we can get a better focus on, you know, instead of somebody saying, "Well, I just don't want that near my house." What is the actual cost benefit? Because we hear a lot of times that there is a... It is going to be a detriment to the community when, you know, really that just could be somebody's feeling. So I'd like more data-driven discussion and decisions and also providing that to the towns.
Okay. Any discussion?
If I just might make a comment, and I did have this discussion with Commissioner Rushing on Friday. Both Mr. Matthews and I talked about this to ensure that we understood the intent. Staff has no problem in doing that. I do want to, though, make the Board aware that this is something that is not something that you're going to see in a couple of meetings. It's going to take us a period of time, depending upon the overall complexity of what you're looking for. It could take us six to nine months to put something together and will probably require some work sessions with the Board to ensure that what we are developing is consistent with what the Board's direction is. And the reason... And all the reason I make that caveat and the reason we had the discussion with Commissioner Rushing is we didn't want to create an expectation that we were going to be able to turn around something very quickly.
Okay. And in that conversation, we talked about it was very important that all the commissioners have input and items that they wanted to be addressed or looked at and make sure that it was comprehensive, very simple, but comprehensive and very to the point on the rating scale.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed?
No.
Number 12. Appointed Chair of the Board of Equalization and Review for 2015. The appointment of the Chair of the Board of Equalization and Review for 2015 was delayed on the April 6 meeting. Since that time, Dutch Hardison has been contacted. I spoke with him personally and he's agreed to serve as Chair for the Board of Equalization and Review for 2015. I make a motion that we adopt Dutch Hardison to serve as Chair of the Board of Equalization Review for 2015. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ms. Coto?
I just have really a couple of comments. One is to let you all know, we talked about employee survey a couple of times that during our Board of County Commissioners meetings and the survey documents have gone out electronically to our employees today. And hopefully, you've seen the posters, et cetera, to try and just ensure employees are aware and participate in that. And the other is just to thank you all for your patience during the VFD discussion. I know it was rather time-consuming, but I think it's probably an extremely important issue and we appreciate your time and your direction.
Commissioner Jerry Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the ladies from the Waxaw Library. I believe this is the second time they've been, so they're trying to make their point. And having grew up in and around Waxaw, if you've ever been to the Waxaw Library, you certainly can empathize or sympathize with them. It would be wonderful if resources were unlimited, but as you can tell, we are faced with issues of public safety which are paramount right now, and so we'll continue to... Or I will continue to consider it and hope that someday we can move forward. I appreciate Commissioner Agmish, your confidence in me by offering to appoint me to that study committee, and we'll see how that goes. I just want to make one comment with regard to that. We have a five-member commission board and a nine-member school board, but we had to have a committee of 14 appointed to study the schools issue. We have a fire commission, but we have to appoint a blue ribbon committee to study our fire issues. We have an ag advisory board who are responsible for issues at the ag center, and that ag advisory board spent two years close to working on contracts and policies about alcohol and use of the center. And yet, we're going to study that again. So I just think it's important that if we're going to create these committees and involve people and ask them to give it their time, that we use that as our system by which we conduct our business. And I voted no on a couple of issues tonight and no... No offense to Commissioner Rushing or Commissioner Helms on those issues. Certainly, the idea of access is a personal one relative to whoever might be Chair. Certainly, the, the idea of access is a, is a personal one relative to whoever might be Chair. I remember as a department head, I once served where we had a, a commissioner, God rest his soul, who would show up unannounced and walk the halls to see if everybody was actively at work. So, so I, I appreciate decorum, and if I'm going to come see anybody, I'll certainly give you a call before I, before I come. And then we, we had the little issue of, Brian remembers the little issue of the score, the scorecard for planning, for development projects, and, and voted favorable and unfavorable. I, I recognize the experience and the abilities that we have. I think we have one of the, the most professional and qualified staffs of any county in North Carolina right now. And I trust those folks in planning and public works to provide me with the information to make, make decisions on. And I, I don't see my role as a commissioner to get into picking winners and losers based on capacities or cost benefits or whatever. I believe that's, that's based on each, and I believe we have rules and guidelines and how to do that, and, and that's, that's sort of where I stand. But, but I appreciate working with the board and the opportunity to be here. Wish you a good evening.
Commissioner Agnes?
I would echo a lot of what Commissioner Simpson had to say, and I would also ask that if we're going to put things on the consent agenda, that they not be items that need to be discussed. I think it was completely inappropriate to put a policy that had been deliberated last year that had a unanimous vote of all five commissioners to hide it in a consent agenda with the intention of passing it with no discussion. I'd also remind my colleagues that we are conservatives and we believe in limited government, and I would ask that you perhaps revisit the platform in which we all supposedly adhere to. Because what I'm, what I'm finding is, my understanding and perhaps yours of limited government is quite different. With that, I wish you a good evening.
Commissioner Lance Simpson?
No comment, other than have a good evening.
Thank you. And I too have a lot of faith in our staff. I expressed that during the public hearing tonight with the fire departments. Hope you caught that and understood that, because I know you've worked long and hard to try to find the least cost option to the most people in the county as possible. And I appreciate your hard work on that. I also think that, you know, there's nothing wrong with having more information. Limited government, yes. There's no teeth to it, there's no denial of anything to be able to get information. And there's no problem with sharing information with our towns, who are being told by residents of Union County that you're costing us money, when they may or may not be, and they have a more factual database information from our staff, who we trust and have faith in. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I appreciate it. I want to thank the, all the individuals that showed up to our work session this evening. We had mayors, we had town council representatives from four or five of the municipalities. I think one thing I was very disappointed is that a statement that we don't need to talk to the municipalities, I think we desperately need, and I think it goes back into the planning piece that Commissioner Rushing recommended. We need to be able to communicate with these, our, our brothers in, in, in the county, and the government in Union County. Every single person in the town of Monroe is a constituent of mine, and it's important to hear what they've got to say. I was pleased with that, and I too believe in planning. It's a lot better to plan than to, to react. And I can promise you, there was no intent to hide anything. I don't, I don't, there was, there was no intent to hide anything in the consent agenda. I would just encourage, I've had past commissioners tell me, they don't even read it. So I'm, I'm excited that you read it. So other than that, I think we need to move, that the board go into closed session to consult with attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider and give instructions to an attorney in accordance with GS 143 31811A3 concerning the handling or settlement of the following judicial action, Union County Board of Education versus Union County Board of Commissioners. All in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Okay.